Hi, good evening. Thank you for coming.
Mike Paul.
Sorry.
How was that?
Much better.
Is that better?
Yes.
Alright. I want to welcome everyone to this special meeting of the MSAD 15 School Board, where we'll have a public hearing on our upcoming referendum questions on the November ballot. So first of all, let's just declare a quorum, which we have. Call this meeting to order at 6:32. And as usual, please stand and join me in the meeting.
...to defy the United States of America and its republic, which stands alone nation under God, in business, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you all. A couple of things before we get going. I would love to thank and honor the students we had stay here tonight until 6:30 to give tours, be available to answer questions, and talk to you about what life here at the school is like. These kids are only a fraction of our student body. They represent the best of who we have. Their peers are out on fields right now, playing games on the road, at work, at dance. And grateful for these kids for being here, so please join me in thanking them. It's not an easy thing at 16 to represent your whole school in a public meeting. So kiddos feel free to join us and participate, and also no one will be mad if you want to comment. Alright, so an overview, quick overview of how the evening will go. This is a public hearing, much the same way there would be one at the legislature. Something is coming up for consideration. So we will read the full ballot measure. We will open the floor for questions. We have our panel of folks here tonight representing our voting legal minds. We have our finance folks. We have architects and engineers representing the air quality, the gym, the auditorium, and the field works. So if you have a question about any of those things, as we come to them in turn, we'll hand the mic over to our experts. And if we don't have the answer to your question, we'll follow up after. You're also welcome to register a comment and not ask a question. I do want to remind folks that as a special meeting, comment is limited to the topic tonight. So these will be in turn comments or questions about each of the three ballot measures. We will use our traditional public participation as school board meeting policy, where folks will have about two minutes to talk. I will let you know when it's going over. And people should generally be respectful, kind, stay on topic, hear normal stuff. And I think that's all of the housekeeping. We are going to have a presentation on the estimated tax impact. This has been an open question in the community and one that we said we'd get stronger information on. And since we have that as new material, I am going to bring up David Pascal, our Director of Operations, to show a few slides specific to that piece. We'll then move into each question in turn, where I'll read the ballot specifically, exactly what appears on the ballot. I'll give a little bit of overview of what the project is to remind folks in more layman's terms. We won't spend a lot of time on it. And then we'll open the floor to each thing in turn. So having said all that, I'm going to turn it over to David.
Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me okay? Awesome. I appreciate everybody coming out tonight and giving me this opportunity to present the information on how I calculated the estimated tax impact for the two communities of Gray and Gloucester. So what I did first was to look at what the spending would be, the annual spending, estimated annual spending, each of the first 10 years that we would be paying back for these projects. So I'm breaking it out with question number one for air quality. That would be the estimated annual cost each of the first 10 years. Same thing for facilities, question two. And then question three, the artificial turf, and this is the total. As you can see, in the first year, it's a significantly lower number because we wouldn't be having that loan at the beginning of the year. And then it goes up in years two and three, and then over time it decreases. So the fairest way to look at the annual tax cost of, or the annual cost of paying back these loans is to do a 10-year average. And that's this $4,220,843. But I'm breaking it out with each question. So if we look, remember this number, the 4220. I'm carrying that forward here on this first column, where I'm calculating the cost for each of our communities, Gray and Gloucester. So we've got our percentages that are based on the cost sharing formula that was established when the district was created. And we break up that $4,220,843 to these two numbers, $2,786, $178 for Gray, $1,434, $664 for Gloucester. And then the same thing for each of the three questions that will be on the ballot. So what we'll do first is look at the town of Gray to calculate that cost, and then I'll go forward and look at New Gloucester. So again, remember, this is the total for Gray is $2,786, $178. So here's where we see that number on our next slide. At the top of the slide, I've got the total tax valuation for the town of Gray, so $2 billion plus dollars for all of the homes in Gray. Then I'm taking the average annual cost for each of the questions, dividing it by that number, multiplying it times 1,000 to get the mill rate impact. So we can see a mill rate impact for air quality is .063. Facilities is 1.194. Turf is .015, for a total of the 1.272. What I'm now doing on this slide is taking the average assessed home value, which I got from the town of Gray, and this is with the most recent 224 valuation. If I take that number, divide it by 1,000, and multiply it times the mill rate, I can estimate the annual cost, in this case for air quality, to be $29.91. Same thing for facilities. Multiplying 476 by the 1.194, I get $568.49. And then for turf, the mill rate impact is .015. Multiplied by 476, I get the $7. So the total estimated annual cost, based on the average for the first 10 years, is $605.40 for the town of Gray. Moving on to New Gloucester. The total taxable valuation for all homes in New Gloucester is $643,577.07. And I do the same calculations with New Gloucester's share of the annual paying back of these loans. So for air quality, 70,886 divided by the 643,577.07. Multiply that times 1,000 to get my mill rate. So .110 for air quality, 2.093 for facilities, and turf is .026, for a total of $2.22 for New Gloucester. And then what I do on this next slide, similar calculation to what I did in Gray. Average assessed home value, $250,000 in New Gloucester. If I divide that by 1,000 and multiply it by these mill rates, I get these costs. So for air quality for New Gloucester, $27.54. Facilities, $523.32. Turf, $6.45, for a total of $557.31. And that's an annual cost. So just to show you the calculation, how you would, as a homeowner in either Gray or New Gloucester, I'm using New Gloucester for this example. But if my assessed tax home value is $321,000, I would divide that by 1,000 to get the 321. Multiply that by the mill rate impact of paying off, in this case, the total. Yeah, sorry.
It's just mislabeled.
Good point.
That's right.
Yeah, so this is for Gray. So again, take the 321, and this is in total, times the 1.272 mill rate to get the $408.30. For me as a homeowner in Gray, with a home that is assessed taxed at $321,000. So I know people may have questions. We can hold questions until later in the presentation. I'm going to turn this back over to Penny to go through each of the questions.
Thank you, David. A couple things before we move on. Two, if folks are looking for their, to do this math at home, if you live in Gray, you very likely have a fresh letter on your desk, chrome your revell was just done. So that would be the number you would use as this math is based on. And in Gloucester, just look at your last tax bill, at what your tax assessment is. So that's different than what, you know, what Zillow may say your house is worth. That's not the number you would use. And it also presumes that everything is spent. So a bond lasts us to borrow up to a maximum. There's a lot of contingencies and such built into that. Should we not use it all, we don't borrow it all, and our final bill would be different. Last thoughts on that. So here's the slightly dry card, bear with me. So our first question, this is a little funky looking, but we decided we picked it because this is exactly what it looks like on the ballot. So if you're going in to vote, it will look just like this. This is a sample ballot from the town. So for the first question, one, do you favor authorizing the school board of Maine School Administrative District Number 15, the district, to issue bonds and other evidences of indebtedness in the name of the district in an amount not to exceed $8,914,73, including $6,522,445 of grant loan funding through the State of Maine School Revolving Renovation Fund, SRRF, program to pay costs of indoor air quality renovations and improvements at Gray and Gloucester High School, Gray and Gloucester Middle School, Dunn School, Immelola School, the project. A, SRRF program funding. The Maine Department of Education has awarded the district $6,522,445 of project funding through the state's SRRF program, which provides funds as a combination of a grant and interest-free loan. One, loan principal forgiveness. As a grant under the SRRF program, the Maine Municipal Bond May will forgive 47.34% of the loan principal up to an estimated $3,877,26. Two, interest-free loan. The district will only be obligated to repay 52.66% up to an estimated $3,434,719 of the district's SRRF award over a period of 10 years at an interest rate of 0%. B, supplemental bond. Up to $2,391,628 of project costs may be financed through a supplemental bond issued at local expense and at market interest rates. The supplemental bond shall pay project costs not covered by the SRRF program. So that is exactly as it will appear on your ballot. You do have a little bit of layman's terms here of reminding what this project is. So the air quality funding grant replaces or updates obsolete equipment at four or five schools. This will improve air quality for CO2 levels, reduce chance of mold growth, inhibit spread of all airborne pathogens, including COVID-19, the flu, RSV, WOOPEN COV, et cetera. This equipment will also be updated. Right now, we don't have equipment that can be controlled by programming remotely based on what's happening in the weather. So it's all old-fashioned pneumatic controls. So that would be an update as well. Anything that could be repaired versus replaced is already been checked in. It's not a wholesale gutting of the ventilation system, although in large part, the systems are 35 to 50 years old. And then just a little chart as a easy reminder that $3.1 million is paid by the Maine DOE. $3.4 would be that interest-free loan. And then the $2.3 million more traditional bond financing. So that's the kind of little reminder. There also is a handout, if you didn't see it when you walked in, they're on the table. That is a nice one-pager that the engineer folks put together for us. Having said that, we will officially open the public hearing on question one. So if folks have a question or a comment, I will let you know. We are live streaming, the cameras are on me, the cameras are not on you. So you will speak into the microphone. But if it's not comfortable for you, you don't need to worry that you're on camera.
Good evening. I attended my first school board meeting here last spring. And I just want to say it was an exciting moment because it was between good, solid dialogue and Jerry Springer Show. So I just wanted to say that, alright? So you're not going to get Jerry Springer Show tonight. My first question is, when it comes to the air quality renovations, a button on, some of them are going to begin in the school, right? And it's going to be tied in with possible question two, if that passes. Is that cost factored in? If one question doesn't pass, the other one does. If question two doesn't pass, is the first, the dollar amount, the first question, including renovation in the areas, as it says, is it?
Sure, so I'm going to take a stab at it, but leave your hands if I'm doing it wrong. The question one, the grant that we applied for, applies to existing buildings. So it would repair and replace equipment through the existing. Any HVAC equipment that came along with an expansion or renovation is included in the budget for question two.
Okay.
Is that correct?
Okay, so if both questions pass, the first question's cost amount will be reduced by the amount of parts later?
No, two different projects, although there is opportunity all the time. Again, correct me if I'm wrong, but the more that we pass, move forward together, the more that the projects can work together to say, okay, we have a ceiling open for this. Let's put in the sprinklers that we are required by law with question two to put in. Do you want to say more?
My Germanic, Archsex, work on the project. So as part of those synergies that happen, so as part of the mechanical work that would happen with the bond work from the Maine DOE, they've opened up a lot of ceilings in the building. So one of the things we would look at is to take advantage of that while they're having the ceilings open. It'd be a great opportunity to get the sprinkler systems run through the building that are going to be necessary for the next phase of the project, for the question two aspects of the project. So if there are synergies like that that can happen, we'd take advantage of it. The sprinkler system ones are the ones that comes in line pretty quickly, which would be a big help for the second question.
Okay, so same thing, if two passes and one doesn't, the cost for, when you're doing the new renovations, you got to put in the experience, right? You're not going to use the 30, 40-year-old HVAC and sprinkler systems.
Right, we're going to take advantage of, for question two, the sprinkler systems have got to go in as part of the project. So yeah, the ceiling can come down as part of that project to get the...
Okay, and I did ask you earlier, the grants are already, then said, yep, you're going to get this money if it passes, correct?
Leave it. Correct.
Is that a yes?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
It's just, who knows what happens? I mean, I know you all have fallen in state politics, but there's short money coming up next year.
No, we've been awarded the money for sure.
Okay.
It's really, it's only if it does not pass, we lose access to the money. So it's been awarded to us, it's sitting there waiting for us. If we pass and authorize to accept it, we get it for sure.
Sure.
But if we, you know, it expires...
And there's no chance the state's going to change their mind?
We would have to reapply.
No, there's no chance the state's going to change their mind because, I want to say, the state's suspect sometimes.
Definitely not.
So that's guaranteed money if it passes?
100%.
100%, alright.
And we have already applied, this is part I was ensuring earlier, we have already applied for the remaining piece that we need to bond. That was part of this process, correct?
We haven't applied, we've got an estimate for what it would be, but we didn't apply for that.
Because we haven't asked it?
Right.
Yes.
Okay, the 2 million, the extra $2 million piece that we would have to bond ourselves.
Yep.
We have an estimate from the financial institution, so that's a good number.
Okay.
But like, you have to pass it to actually lock that rate in.
Okay. And my last question is, is this one, but also number two, having worked with engineers for many years, is there a factor built in for mission creep for running into items that are like, oh no, we run into this? Is there a percentage you picked to add to this so that if everything goes smoothly, it's not the full bill, it's less?
Yes, can you speak to that? I can't remember the exact number, Mike.
I can, I have Don Preston with part of the grant writing team. So I'll answer that. The way that the RFP went out was it was a firm fixed price, no change order, written by this engineering firm right here.
Okay.
And since this has been expended, and I'm showing the school's attorney right here. Your earlier question about the certificates for the grant, they're signed by the Maine Department of Education Commissioner. So they're good for the project. So if they run into something that wasn't anticipated, they don't get the ability to do a change order and add cost.
Okay, so that's it, no more, it's on the, who we pay for?
On the contractor.
Okay.
Yeah, so that's for question one. And we're jumping around a little bit, while we're here, I don't want to put it off.
But I think they're both tied together.
Yes, yeah, we'll answer now and then.
So as for question two, though, we, in the budget we put together, we put contingencies in place. So the way that I've structured the budget for question two is very similar to a major capital project for the state. So using the state budget template. So the state recommends some larger projects that should carry a design contingency, which is in there. We have a bid contingency, which is also in there. Then there's a construction contingency. And those items are going to cover, you know, things that come up, right? You have an existing building, you open things up, and you could, you'd have surprises. But we have contingencies built in to handle that. And those contingencies are coming in close to $6 million, over $6 million.
Okay, alright. And last question, I know we haven't gotten that far yet. Maybe we have contractors in mind. Have you had a list of contractors to choose from to put up bid? Or is that still too late?
So on the question two side of things, we're, it'll be an open bid. So there's no set list of contractors unless we go through the state's qualification process, which we could do. The reality is, is there's, you're going to have to be able to get bonding for a project of this size. So that's going to act in prequalification in itself. So be open to contractors that can get bonding capacity to do the work.
Okay, alright.
But I just want to be clear on question one, because you said they're interlinked, question one and question two. They're not.
Well...
Question one has been bid, it's shovel-ready. The bids were received in the district office. It was advertised, and contractors have been selected, so. And the RFP again was generated per, again, it's been Nixon's school's attorney. It was generated in accordance with the revolving renovation fund.
What I was thinking of was, engineering-wise, you're doing new sprinkler systems, HVAC.
Absolutely.
So that's kind of tied, and that's why I was asking the first couple of questions of, is there a, one passes, the other one doesn't? What is the coverage? Is that, has that already been mitigated?
Sure.
Yeah, so those are set, right now, they're priced and all, everything's done separate. So if everything goes forward, hopefully, you know, there's more opportunity to value engineer that there and have things potentially be less. But either of them would go forward without the other at the numbers that we have set here. So not dependent.
Thank you, folks, appreciate your interest.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Christine Veron, I'm from New Gloucester. And I'm going to be speaking to the HVAC. So the specific ventilation requirements for main schools, as we know, are outlined in LP 705. And these are based on the ASHRAE 62.1 standard. The MSAD website says, "They tested rooms in all five of our schools and found high levels of carbon dioxide that are beyond what is recommended by ASHRAE." The highest level, according to the data logging, was room 218 at 2,176 parts per million. Again, our legislation is based on the ASHRAE standard. So I'm going to read from the ASHRAE position document on indoor carbon dioxide levels. The meaning of indoor carbon dioxide as an indicator of indoor air quality and ventilation is commonly misinterpreted within the HVAC industry and the research community and among the public. Significant misunderstandings remain. ASHRAE, from which our law is based, takes the following positions. And ASHRAE, for those people who aren't familiar, is the American Society of Heating and Refrigeration Engineers. Indoor carbon dioxide concentrations do not provide an overall indication of indoor air quality. Existing evidence for direct impacts of carbon dioxide on health, well-being, learning outcomes, and work performance is inconsistent and does not justify changes to ventilation and indoor air quality standards, regulations, or guidelines. Several groups have explored the cognitive effects of short-term exposure to pure carbon dioxide at concentration levels between 600 and 5,000 parts per million. Some of these studies demonstrated concentration-dependent impairment, but other studies did not show any effects on cognition. ASHRAE standard has not contained a limit value for indoor carbon dioxide since nineteen, since the 1989 edition of the standard. Misunderstanding of previous editions of the standard continued to lead many to incorrectly attribute a 1,000 parts per million limit to ASHRAE.
Mr. Veron, just really, I know you're headed over two minutes. I'm not going to stop you, but if you could.
Okay. I'm almost done. Just a couple more sentences and then I'll give my question. ASHRAE does not recommend a specific carbon dioxide concentration as a metric of infection risk. Carbon dioxide is considered non-toxic at concentrations up to 5,000 parts per million. Guidelines for the International Space Station and the U.S. submarines currently suggest that carbon dioxide concentrations be maintained at 4,000 to 5,000 parts per million to reduce the incidence of headaches. So I've worked as a school nurse at the school and went on to work for the Department of Education. And I'm in favor of the health and safety of our staff and students. But I'm not understanding why a level of 2,176 is considered alarming when our astronauts and Navy men live in carbon dioxide levels of 4,000 to 5,000 parts per million. So why focus so much on those levels when ASHRAE does not even contain a carbon dioxide level standard?
Could we have, could Steve, can we draw this one to you?
Sure. Yes. So evening, everybody. I'm Steve. I'm a member of ASHRAE. And ASHRAE has 130 different countries that it operates in, 60,000 members. And Kristy, your information, it seems, seems good, but I disagree with it. And I will, I guess what I'd like to do, if it's okay, is take this offline and prepare a solid result and a solid conclusion of, you know, the research that ASHRAE has. That what you're reading might have been selected. I don't know. But I'm sure that I have full information together that, that backs up the position that we have.
Is the law based on the ASHRAE standard?
The law means?
LP 705 for main schools, which include the carbon dioxide levels.
The law is trying to force school districts to adopt to a standard of air quality. And in fact, you make a good point. 2,180 as an indicator is an indicator. So when you take into account, as Penny had talked about, that schools' air handling systems are 35 to 50 years old, the level of CO2 is a measured component of why there's a recommendation to replace and upgrade those systems. There was an excellent article that you wrote in the GNG Exchange that showed some pictures of the antiquated equipment. And in fact, one of the reasons that the main Department of Education is forwarding such a large grant, $6.5 million, number one in the state of Maine. Let me repeat that. Six and a half million dollars, 109 applications in the 2023-2024 cycle. MSAD 15 finished first, six and a half million dollars. These are awards, awards that are written the next year to the school's attorney. So do we go off of one symptom? 2,180, for which I believe Steve had just mentioned that we have all kinds of counter to your, your statement and argument with Dr. Polburn, who we've worked with extensively on this project, Harvard articles and papers that suggest everything exactly the opposite. And in fact, I wish we had brought that up when Steve and I had an opportunity to speak to you so that it didn't have to come to a public forum like this where it obviously is going to take more time to sort of address your issue. But we would like to, but I think the public should know. It's not a sole indicator of why do you replace it? And that's exactly why the main Department of Education has given such a large and substantial grant to this institution. Thank you.
So what I think we're going to do is, we're at time on this particular comment, is we will have Steve prepare a thoughtful response with some information. I will add it to the FAQ page on this, on the site. And also, if you would like, I can email it directly to you.
I perceive plenty of information. There are, I agree, there are many studies. Some show there's effects and show, some show there's not. So I have read through what you did send to me. So thank you very much. You've been very helpful. One quick question. How many bids were there?
Six responses.
Six responses. Okay. Thank you.
Come on down.
So I had a question about the, basically what will happen if we don't replace this? Can you speak a little bit about the risks for not replacing the air quality system? Like what could happen over time and sort of, you know, like what we might see? My understanding is that the, everything is as in the life. Can you explain kind of what that means and why this is, why this might be a unique opportunity to get this done now and what could happen if we don't take action now?
Thank you. Yes. Great question. So I think that if we've been paying attention to the news, what you see in some of the other schools that unfortunately didn't move forward with decisions like this is RSHU 10. They actually closed the school gray. RSHU, MSAD 17, they actually closed the school because of infrastructure type of issues. So the, the reason for the citizens to consider to do this now is that what you don't want, I don't think in this community, is a similar type of action where something fails catastrophically. It's 35 to 50 years old. You duct taped and you baleen wired it to death. And now there's a tough call for the board and for the superintendent to consult with their attorney to close the school. Then what do you do? The incremental capital cost is going to be significantly more for folks like David Pascal to come up with emergency funds. What this thoughtfully is trying to do is bridge a gap between funding for new schools, which is 80 to 100 million dollars, and making state funds available to help replace systems systematically. So that's what could happen on the abstract. And I think that you make a very good point. We're hoping that that doesn't occur with the implementation of the project.
Good evening. I'd like to start by saying I think we can all agree that the schools in our district need some upgrades and renovations. I myself only speak on high schools. I have two kids in high school. So I have been in high school many times where the ceiling tiles are wet and moved out of the way. So water could drain trash cans, students walking around roof leaks in the building as well, as well as bathrooms where the toilets don't flush, the stalls don't lock. What about the moisters? The fact that they have seen and know that the schools have bug and odor problems. Now, all buildings with food have bug and odor problems. However, not all people know about them because they're managed properly. Also, the school board, the superintendent, and the town people are aware of kids who cannot eat lunch because there's not enough time or not enough seating. These lunch problems come from students, not parents. However, when we ask the students to speak up, students are attacked either verbally or on social media. Shouldn't we listen and know their concerns? It's the ones that are in the fight every day in these buildings. I ask what's really important to the town and the district, a new gym, a new football field, or maybe a new building that the roof doesn't leak, making changes so all kids are fed, making user-friendly restaurants. I'm not rich, so I have to live on a monthly budget. So why have the school issues they've budgeted for? Did we not know these issues were issues at the beginning? Who has turned a blind eye till now? Also, I'd like to know how many estimates for these jobs were taken into consideration before coming up with a bond and the final cost? To the gentleman over here who just spoke about the system, taking care of mold and things like that, how is it that we're going to put in a new ventilation system when we have roof 70, tiles that are wet? You're going to get moldy the way. Why don't we fix the problems before putting a Band-Aid on it and saying it's the air quality? It's the building leaking, it's the bigger issues that are causing that. We're trying to Band-Aid it by filtering that.
So that's a question for me. The high school did have a new roof membrane put on it over the summer. So we're hoping that that mitigates previous issues with the roof. It's main. We are going to see leaks now and then. It is not an indication that the building has dissolved and needs to be fully replaced. This is also not things that we can. So these projects go alongside our annual budget for repair and maintenance, which David could speak to. Do you want to speak to the annual budget for capital improvement?
Yes. So we do have set aside.
Can you rev?
Oh, sorry.
Is it on? It's on. We do set aside reserve capital funds each year to address projects. And we review it as a team with the school board to identify which ones we prioritize each year.
So we've had leaking buildings, leaking tiles, the ceilings leaked. That's why we've tarred over it to try to put a Band-Aid on that to stop it. So my question is, why would we put in an air ventilation system when we don't know if that Band-Aid that we just put on is going to work or not till the winter hits? So you can put in a vote for this bond, put in a whole ventilation system. And if your roof leaks, you still have water coming in and mold and mildew coming in. Then you have to address that as well. So why not take care of it all? If you're talking about taking care of it all, and the roof is open and the ceiling tiles are open, why aren't we going to take care of everything at once and make sure the roof doesn't leak before we spend the money to put in the air quality system?
At this point, we don't know whether, I mean, we assume the roof will not leak because we've addressed the work.
But we also know what happens when we assume.
So we're going to have to.
So that's my issue.
We're going to have to wait for a main winter and see if our new roof membrane holds up. But other questions about the air ventilation question?
The reason we're doing this now is because we want to bring up and we lose the $3 million that we don't have to give back if we don't do it now.
So we're doing this, what Sam is saying is that we're doing the ventilation part of it now due to the significant grant we received from the state to help handle it.
And those grant funds were COVID dollars, right? So the federal government gave the state of Maine a bunch of money during COVID. The state of Maine made that big pot of money available to schools. And we took the opportunity to apply for that money so that we can have some of our renovations done with state money and then some, the rest, done with local money. That pot of money isn't there anymore, right? So if we don't do this project now, the HVAC problems are still going to be problems. They're going to be 51 years old instead of 50 years old, but we won't be able to get any state help. So what we're trying to do is take advantage of that state help to try to alleviate the impact on our local taxpayers.
Any more questions or comments on air quality before we move on to question two?
George Oldby Gloucester. I'm going to skip my first couple of questions for a proper meeting. MSAD 15, I have mechanical services to do some work. Mechanical services came in and said, where do you take a look at your systems? So this is just a brief summary, okay? So mechanical services hired a third-party engineering firm. Mechanical services told me about the SRRF funds and helped me get the grant. Mechanical services, in the end, I'm skipping a couple steps. In the end, mechanical services won the so-called only bid submitted. Does anybody find this a little odd? According to a state rep who looked into the state requirements for main air quality, it is correct that it applies to existing buildings. However, when the legislature passed the bill, it did not. It was the Rules Committee after the legislature voted on the bill that put it into required for existing buildings. Starting with the July 21, 2025 budget, right off the bat, before we do anything else, you're going to have $100,000 added for family leave, $4 million for the born. Take a look.
Thank you, Mr. Oldby. Any other for question one? I will move on to question two.
So I'm curious, you had mentioned that you had received six responses for those six bids?
Right. And no, they weren't all bids. They were interested parties in the RFP package. And that RFP was provided to them. And, you know, we had this conversation with Diana at the time in the school district of why we received one bid and a variety of reasons. The firms decide not to bid for a variety of reasons. And this particular package, we received one final bid. But there were other interested parties in the package and in putting together a bid. They just didn't submit in the end.
Okay. So it was one final bid?
It was one bid received. That's right.
Okay. So if there was only one bid, why wouldn't it go out again to see if there was further interest rather than settle on the one?
Yeah. Well, we had this conversation with the school. The school district decided to go ahead with that one.
The school district meaning?
The school district. Yeah.
The school board?
I don't know. I didn't have that conversation, but.
I didn't have that conversation either?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right.
Okay.
Yes. The question is yes. The answer is yes. So the way the process works is you have the six interested parties. They get all the materials, they submit bids, and then there is an opening of the bids. And our CFO at the time, Diana, with the bids, was one in there. It is, it came in, as I recall, slightly under the estimate that we provided to win the grant, right? So online, there is our application for the grant. And that application is very detailed, right? And it comes up with an amount of money that we are, you know, saying that we would like. And so then the grant gave us a certain amount of money saying, yes, this is a project we want to fund. But there's certain reasons why they can't fund the whole project. For instance, there's a rule that each school can't get more than $2 million, right? So, but we had to have a very detailed plan with a very detailed estimate. And that bid came back in slightly under that estimate, right? So we created an estimate of what we thought was going to cost for that grant. And then when the one bid came in and was slightly under that, we thought, seems like it makes sense. And we wanted the work to happen. And so we went forward with that bid. It is definitely the case that sometimes we get multiple bids for projects. And then the CFO will make a recommendation, but almost always we take the lowest bid. In this case, we had one bid. So we said, yes, let's go forward.
Okay. So you said, we created an estimate. We meaning the school board?
We meaning the grant proposal that mechanical services helped us put together. And then they came to us and we had a school board meeting and they said, do you want us to put this grant forward? And we said, yes.
Okay. And then earlier, it was broken down for us about the taxes being affected and all of that. I'm sure we all noticed that Gray was at 66%, and New Gloucester was at 33%. Why is it broken down like that? Why isn't it an even share?
That's a great question. So when we formed MSAD-15 back in 1961, I believe it was, we came up with a formula that said that each town will pay a percentage based on the Department of Education's assessment of all of the land value in those towns. So it's a very complicated process called the ED279. If you Google that, you will find the calculation on the main state website. And what they do is they say Gray is worth this amount of money, and I think it's like a billion dollars, right? It's not the same as our town assessment, it's what the state assesses us at. So they assess Gray at like a billion dollars, and they assess New Gloucester at $500 million. And they do that math, and they say, therefore, Gray has to pay 66%, and New Gloucester has to pay 33%.
So the breakdown comes from the state?
Well, it comes from our agreement, but the values of the land comes from the state.
And that was determined when, Sam?
I believe it was 1961.
Isn't it time to revisit the breakdown?
That's up to the towns, right? So the school board is an independent political entity. We operate based on our charter, right? So if either town is dissatisfied, that town has to start that process.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on to question two, the facilities bond. So again, this is what it will look like exactly on your ballot when you will vote, and I'll read it now. Question two, do you favor authorizing the school board of Maine School Administrative District 15, the district, to issue bonds or notes in the name of the district for school construction and minor capital project purposes in an amount not to exceed $57,36,400 to construct and equip the following projects? One, in addition renovations and improvements to the Green and Gloucester High School for the purpose of creating a dedicated auditorium space for district-wide use, including the installation of theater seating and creation of music classrooms? Two, renovations and improvements to the existing Green and Gloucester High School cafeteria and kitchen for the purpose of developing a new and efficient food service kitchen and dedicated cafeteria? Three, a new regulation-sized gymnasium at Green and Gloucester High School for district-wide use? Four, new athletic fields and renovations and improvements to existing athletic fields, including outdoor bathroom facilities at Green and Gloucester Middle School and Green and Gloucester High School for district-wide use? Five, new parking and reconfiguration of existing parking at Green and Gloucester High School to include, including the addition of approximately 120 new parking spaces to facilitate the flow of traffic? And six, a new sprinkler system at the Green and Gloucester High School to comply with acquired state and local renovation codes? As a quick reminder what this looks like, the auditorium portion of this project will be, the tan area is new construction, the green area is renovations, including renovations here, you can't see it, but that's where you're sitting right now, actually. So this would be the new building. This is space I am standing on right now. Would become new rooms for performing arts and classrooms for music. And number six here also worth noting is where the outdoor bathrooms... So these are public bathrooms that are facing out into what would be adjacent to field space as part of that piece, and new bathrooms for the auditorium portion. The gym question, well, it's all the same question, but the gym portion refers to, again, in scan, we have new construction. This would be the regulation-sized gym that would meet the National Federation of State High School Association's recommendations for basketball, where it has enough room around the court for teams to sit on the court and not in the stands. Also would be the appropriate height for volleyball and indoor track, some new locker rooms, and then some renovated locker rooms in maintaining the current gym we have that is small that would be in use. So these two gyms would be in use all day for sports and physical education. The athletic field portion, this is a giant overview of the fields that would be either reconfigured, resurfaced, or added. Field space to accommodate our 36 middle and high school teams, increased access for our community programs such as Patriotit Soccer, the youth football, new snack shack that would have outdoor bathrooms, improved, a lot of changes to parking lots and flow to keep people safely moving through the campus when they're here for events, and some reorientation of fields or placement of fields for how they interact with the sun. So there's a lot of information that was in the cafeteria. So we're sitting in it right now. This space would remain, a wall would come up here. This space would be dedicated cafeteria, repurposing the space we have. There would not be major construction here. We could use the space to do a lot of different types of seating and open up the service area so kids can flow through and we get rid of the bottleneck. When we surveyed the kids, they noted lunch as the worst part of their day here, and that impacts all of the kids who go to school. So reconfiguring in the service area, but largely maintaining the quality kitchen equipment that we've taken good care of, so it's not a gutting of the kitchen. That is a very quick elevator speech on a big part of the project. Again, there is a lot of information online as well if you want to learn more, if this is your first meeting on the topic. Other than that, I want to open the second panel public here for questions and comments on question two. We have been being pretty casual because it is a small and polite group, but I do want to stay on task of questions and comments related to question two as we can move it forward.
Hi. I have a question regarding the budget for each of the individual items within question two. Sure. When the bond committee last met seven months ago, these were all guestimates, and you're going to work on coming up with more solid numbers. So what is the cost for the fields? What is the cost, the budget, for the cafeteria? What is the budget for the gym? What's the budget for the auditorium? Out of that 53 million?
Sure. So we did have, these are the same numbers that we used at our last, the bond meeting, when we brought everyone together to preview the material for this. I'm not sure if you were in attendance at that meeting. These numbers are the same. I am going to ask Mike to speak to it. It's a little bit, we can't just break it into thirds. Each of those major components has a budget associated with it, but the administration, permitting, design is all...
Right, and as of the last meeting, you didn't have that because it was estimates. I was at the last meeting, and then I even watched the subsequent one on TV. And you don't have a breakdown to say, out of the 53 million, we're going to put $10 million towards the auditorium.
Sure.
$12 million is going to be towards the gym. That's what I'm asking.
Sure. Can you speak to that? I could get, I have my working number in my head, but I'll draw.
It's on the website. I can read it, but go ahead.
So this is probably here.
Sure.
Yeah, so how the, again, we use the Reforming the State budget format that they use for their, for projects, which is just a great format and template to use. So with the additions and renovations breakdown, we have the gym addition and renovation. This is just part of the construction budget. This doesn't include things that come under administrative costs and fees and things like that. So just straight construction costs. We're looking at the gym area renovations, about just under $12 million. The auditorium piece at just over 15. The sprinkler work, we're figuring it's going to be just over a million dollars. There's some boiler improvements that will go along with that that'll improve, that'll go impact each aspect of each addition. And then the site development piece we have at almost $15 million.
That's the fields.
So that's still a $20 million difference about, out of the 53. So the cost for the gym you just mentioned, what's the cost on the auditorium?
Our auditorium number that we have right now is just over $15 million.
$10 million? Okay, so that still leaves $5 million. But that now, you're not, that is all encompassing? So that's all the build-out, all the construction, all the incidentals, the cafeteria, all the equipment's been decided upon. Note, all those numbers are out there?
Why don't you speak to how these estimates are created?
Yeah, so when we put these estimates together, we've put together some, some conceptual drawings, the drawings you've seen here now. We work with a third-party cost estimator to review our numbers that we have, and they put together their numbers. This is an estimator that does work for a number of different firms across the state to put together pretty solid estimates. So he sees these numbers on a regular basis, so we're pretty comfortable with the estimates that he's put together. And again, then we put that, those numbers into our budget template that we use on a number of projects throughout the state, and that's where we come up with the overall, the overall estimate that we have. And like I said, that's just the construction values that I was mentioning.
So, but that's why I'm asking now the representatives from the school board and the district, what are all the additional costs in addition to these construction estimates? Have you factored that out, and is that published anywhere?
There's no additional costs.
Hey, you said that's construction, though.
Right, because what, there's also, in the, in the 57 million, which is question two, right? There's also $8 million of administrative costs, the contingency, the, you know, the site planning, all that kind of stuff is not construction. And then there is another $6 million for fees and services, right? So you have a, you know, that extra design that needs to be done, right? So, right, so it's all in the 57 million.
Because the only thing in the 57 million was the fields. That is where we saw concrete numbers. This is going to cost this much. Field 2 and 3 are going to cost this much. Field 9 is going to cost this much. And the only reason why you have that is because this has been known on for over a decade, trying to get fields and turf. So you've been taking the numbers from 10 years ago, and you just factored in a cost increase.
No, no, that's not true.
That's absolutely not true.
That's not a true statement.
Sam, I'm going to, if I could take...
Go right ahead.
...that conversation. Sam, where online, I'm looking, I do want to direct folks.
If you click on the tab for question two,
Yeah.
which is auditorium, fields, cafeteria, gym, and parking, and you scroll all the way to the bottom, there is an estimate of probable costs, which is what we use to come up with the number that we are bonding, right? So, right, again, a bond, a vote for bonding is you are allowing us to borrow up to this amount of money, right? We are not approving like an exact project because to do all the work to figure out the exact project costs money, right? So part of those final details, right? Where, where exactly is the snack shack going to be? Is it going to be over here, or is it going to be over here, right? So we have those things...
Okay, so what's the cost on the snack shack then?
What's that?
So you're mentioning the snack shack specifically. I don't care where it's located, how much is it costing?
It's priced into here, I can't remember what...
It's not itemized, that's what you're saying.
So it's not itemized because this is the part where, at some point, we have to go with the very professional estimate and not spend $200,000 of their time to get a number for every, you know, drawer opening because then we will have to put that much more into it, and the voters might say no.
So what cap are you putting on each component? That's my question. Are you saying the ceiling for expenditures on the gym is going to be capped at $10 million? And we're going to work with that $10 million? That's what I'm asking.
Yeah.
How are you going to do this?
On the theater, fields, cafeteria, gym page, question two page, all the way at the bottom, you can see laid out, so the gym number is just shy of $12 million. So that will be the budget for the gym. We will have, that's it. We will have to live within that budget because that would be what the voters have approved.
Okay.
Same goes for the auditorium, cafeteria, renovations, $15 million. So again, that's, the work has been done to say, we know this is a good number, and that's the number, so...
So where specifically are those numbers that the cap is going to be for each of these pieces?
So that is on the bond webpage. If you go to the SAD-15, I always get to it by going to SAD-15, clicking on the red square, and... Sorry?
M, M, SAD.
M, SAD-15, and there's a tab at the top that says theater, fields, cafeteria, and gym. If you click on that and scroll down, the very last thing is the estimate of probable cost broken out, construction, and the renovations. For example, the sprinkler line item is in there, and then the administrative costs and contingency reserve, fees and services for the total. So again, this is, we have spent a year getting this number to say, this is as much as we could use. This is what we think it would be in plus $6 million of padding. So we will do the project in this, or some, or we don't, this isn't, we're not going to come back and say we got it wrong. It's just not how we do it.
I have another question regarding the usages.
Yeah.
On the fields, because I remember back in 2014 when we sat down with Beasley, Diane, myself, and there was another couple from New Gloucester and men, if and gray, I don't remember the names. But the usages, they factored in the gray teams, the district teams, and they added in non-district components, non-district entities that use the facilities. And the overages and the wear and tear were attributed to these outside groups that were over-renting and leasing the fields, not the school district teams themselves. So with that, there was the big push, and it was the external teams that were pushing for the fields and the turf at the time. And we spoke with the state, and they said, you cannot use taxpayer dollars to build that facilities to benefit the non-district entities. It's illegal. So I'm questioning now, this usage, all the factors and the loads I saw, all that, but where's the breakdown? How much is actually district? How much is non-district?
So my understanding is the, the usage rates we're getting are from our athletic director, and these are our students, so these are our teams. Now, we do have, we do refer to like our, you know, the P B football. Those kids are district kids, they live in Green and Gloucester.
But they're not, that, those organizations are leasing the fields, and they were leasing far below what they should have been paying. They weren't paying, what they paid to lease the fields wasn't even covering the school district's maintenance people to be here after hours. Their overtime salaries.
Sure, I can't speak to what happened in 2014. I know that now, when folks rent, it's based on a, you know, it's based on a series of criteria that falls into our website, and if a rental requires the presence of a custodian, then they pay for that custodian as well. So like our indoor rentals run more expensive because if it's in the building, you have custodians here, you have someone locking up after you, and those folks pay that.
Right, because those numbers were grossly inflated. And when we went back and we sat down and we looked at the numbers, they said, oh, you can't factor in
Sure.
the non-district usage.
Yeah, so I can't speak to what they did in 2014.
But I'm just questioning, did you, I mean, today?
So this is based on...
Is it all inclusive, every team that steps out there regardless? Or is just the district?
It's on that same page, on the question two page.
Well, there's numbers and load factors.
Right.
But it doesn't say specifically this much amount.
That's our teams.
That's just great...
That's correct.
Oh, was it you?
Yeah, so, yeah, so the updated usage numbers that we developed in 2020, the freshman numbers, were really from the school itself.
Okay.
Middle school, high school. We did take a look at some numbers from outside youth groups, but we kept it really in-house to really understand what the usage from this actual school campus is using on these fields. So we revised those, and that's what we input to get those numbers. We have some detailed line items that kind of backed that up, and what we presented was really the summary of them.
Okay.
Thank you, sorry, I forgot. The name's not here tonight, and I forgot that you would have worked with them very closely on that stuff.
Okay, and just one other question then. In the fields, the supposed plan that's out there for the fields, there's a line item that's... In the fields, the supposed plan that's out there for the fields, there's a line item that says, cost of fields nine hundred and thirty-eight thousand and change. Then under that, there's item five, infield turf only, okay, it says seven hundred and thirty-eight thousand. Now, we haven't gotten to question three yet, but the bond only says it's seven hundred and three. So there's a two hundred thousand dollar discrepancy, where's that money?
Yeah, so that number that we originally looked at, that larger seven hundred thousand, was an add to, to change the inside of the track to synthetic turf. If we wanted to go two pieces of synthetic turf. The actual main stadium's a smaller square footage, so that's why you see a smaller seven hundred thousand dollar number.
Because it went from nine hundred and thirty-eight, nine fifty-eight, to seven thirty-eight, which oddly enough, seven hundred and thirty-eight thousand was the exact bond question for turf in 2014. Ironically enough, it just seems like you're using the same numbers, that's why I'm questioning.
I can tell you they're fresh, they, you know, these are updated to today's, today's dollars from any other municipal public projects that we've done over the last five years. Our numbers are constantly updated and new.
Yeah, because it just seems odd that it went down when everything else has gone up a place.
Well, and don't forget that part of that is, that question three, which we'll coach you next, but it is related to your point. That number is not the straight-up cost of a turf field. So there's work, if, if question two passes and it's just a grass field, there, some of that money, you know, is gonna go to improve a grass field. It would cost that much more to make that improved field turf. That is not the goal.
It's not explicit, it's not clear, because when you look at it, it says turf fields nine hundred and thirty-eight thousand. Turf infield only, seven hundred and thirty-five thousand.
Nowhere in our concept.
Yeah, in that, there's a handout, because I have some bonds, maybe that's what we gave us.
I see it, I see. So the reality is, these are the numbers that we have. The difference, number three represents the difference of doing the turf instead of grass.
Okay.
Anybody else on question two?
Quick, quick. Did you say in question two, there was some money for boiler repair or boiler work, or something like that?
Yeah, so as, as you can imagine, the size of this facility with this addition, yes, there is, because there's, we've gotta do some boiler work, because the size of the facility's changing dramatically.
So why isn't that covered under the HVAC system? It is HVAC.
No, because it's a poor quality. It is a ventilation system we've been approved, to get a grant for it is not the boilers, that's the difference.
HVAC, that is heating, ventilation, and air conditioning.
Mr. Polby, I understand what HVAC stands for. The fact of the matter is, the award we won is for the air quality, it's for the ventilation portion of HVAC. It is not some, it's not a blanket award, that just is what it is.
Is it possible to go back to the layout of the fields on screen, please?
Bear with me when I figure out. This one?
Yes, just taking a quick look at it. So the new gymnasium, I agree, it's neat, the new basketball facility, whatever. It's taken up a lot of parking. What's the offset? And forgive me if I don't know exactly what's up there. How many spaces are we losing, or are we offsetting space for space?
So I can tell you, we have an offset add across the campus with this plan of close to a hundred and ninety spaces.
Okay, where is that?
So, yeah, that's, and on your, on your way out, this is on the wall out there, so you can get a closer look at it. But this, number nine, number seven, this is all new or reconfigured parking. So this is not what our existing parking lot looks like.
Okay. And includes a reroute of the campus drive around that gym.
So it's an actual gain of parking space?
A lot of parking.
Yeah, but, yeah, about a hundred and ninety spaces.
Sixty of those spaces-ish would be closer to the baseball field.
In Maine, that's like seeing Bigfoot, we got added parking versus losing parking.
Yes.
So earlier, I believe you said that this is, hasn't been put out to bid yet, right? When, if it passes, goes out to bid, will you implement at least a minimum number of bids before decisions made and not end up with one bid, even though you have several interested parties?
So that is really, will be a question for recommendations with our finance office and the bond, the board when we get to that point.
Okay, I'll ask the question differently. Will you say, no, we will not have just one bid and go with it?
So we can't take action here tonight, and I can't speak or act on behalf of the board? So that's not something, we could say that we hear that that would be a preference from the community, but that's...
Is it appropriate to ask the board's opinion individually?
So this is, this gets into like a technical thing about school boards. We're supposed to only speak as one voice, right? So we're not supposed to ever promise what our vote would be until we take our vote?
No, I'm looking for your opinion, not a promise. So if I was to talk to Sam on Broadway, I could get Sam's honest opinion, would you support that?
Right, so I'd be happy to speak to him, just speaking as my honest opinion, right?
You can speak for anybody else, you got it.
We have an estimate of costs, you know, there are only so many companies in the state that are bonded and can do a project of this size.
Sure, I'm not shocked, I'm not shocked.
Right, I mean, it's not like, we are not swimming in large construction companies. One of the things I'm worried about is we don't have anybody bidding on.
Sure.
So say we had four people bid on it, I mean, four people expressed interest, one bids, that bid comes in lower than our estimate, I would have to really think hard about why I would turn it down.
Hopefully, when thinking about turning it down, you're looking at the quality of the company, too.
Right, I'm just saying.
Right, no, I understand, I understand the thought process, I'm just looking, because earlier, there was the bidding process, and again, I know a little bit about bids, not much, but there's always that option to put in, hey, you know, if we don't get at least three bids, honest, you know, quality bids, quality is a speculative term, then we will rebid. And it doesn't put in jeopardy the funding that's set aside, again, the state is suspect, and I'll leave that till the day I die, is that that money's gonna be available when the decision is made. So with that, if I'm still here when the meeting's done, I would like your honest individual opinions. We would like to put this, I would, you know, whatever, does that make sense?
Yep, and I'll open the floor now, nobody has to speak, but if anyone else in the board would like to weigh in or respond to that, please, Gary?
One thing that has become, I've been on the board a long time, I've said this on other pages. It used to be you'd put something up to bid, whether it's a bus or a van or a construction project, and you'd get fifteen bids. It's not unusual now to get one, two, or three, maybe. You're lucky if you get two or three.
That's, that's a common name.
But at the same, right, so the reality of today's bidding process is you don't get that. Yes, we are very hard on those bids, we look very carefully at who submits them, and we would never, or I can speak, I can speak for myself, I would never advocate to accept a bid, only because it was the only bid we had. If, if the company was a quality company, and the bid came in anywhere near what, you know, the package was supposed to be, but it was our only bid, I would advocate to do it, because again, I'm interested in moving the district forward.
Absolutely, honest answer, thank you.
And every, and every year we delay, it's more expensive, they don't, they never go down. So, in interest of moving the project, I would advocate, provided the quality of the company, and regardless of what one bid I take.
Anybody else?
Very much like Gary said, I would be suspect if there was only one bid, but given the climate like everybody said, again, I would, I would definitely, I think as a board, I think we vet that company out, make sure that it was something that we were, felt comfortable moving forward with, but should there be only one bid, then that might be the always, we can't force people to bid, right?
No, I understand.
But yes, I think with proper vetting, I would be, yes.
Okay, anybody else?
I would, I would say the same as, as the other group that spoke.
Is, is it my understanding that you'd handle some of the...
I mean, I would for more than one, but yes, as Cora said, if we could vet it properly and they were reputable, I would be interested in pushing forward.
Okay.
I agree. Multiple bids would be best, that we work with what we got.
Good, all right, no, appreciate your honest answers, that's all I got for this one, for now.
Thanks, you reserved the right ones, let's go ahead.
So my question relates to the fields of question two. So we wanna put the money into the fields and upgrade the fields, which is great, but have we thought about the, after that? I mean, you can put in all the new fields you want, but who's gonna take care of the fields? How are we gonna keep these fields better than we did previously, to support the money that we just put into them? The other part of that question is, the new gymnasium, the new space in the school, have we allocated or figured out how we're gonna get more janitors to clean that, clean that, keep up with all that?
So let's take this in two parts. Do you wanna speak to the, the factoring in of maintenance or the ways in which these improvements will reduce?
Yeah, I think, you know, first and foremost, I think we'd be looking at trying to construct these fields in a manner that wasn't from, you know, nineteen sixty, right? So right now, inside the track, you have giant catch bases, right, all around the inside. They're really actually kind of safety hazards for kids who are running beyond, beyond field of play. We would wanna grade these fields at the right grade, use the right, use the right sod, use the right grass species, use the right irrigation where necessary, and orient them the right way, so they're getting the right money. So I think, you know, where we've placed these, as we've looked at kind of organization of them, we've tried to be, you know, as, as efficient as possible, so that we have good multi-use fields that overlap, have ability to, to be striped in different manners. But then, yes, it then falls on the district to then say, okay, we need to maintain these to that, to that level. But having it constructed right to begin with is a huge first step.
Sure, and I think that's my question to the district, is how do we, we can build all the fields we want, we can redo them all along, how do we keep the grass up, how do we keep the grass, how do you maintain the fields? I mean, just saying that we can't find anybody to do it, or we don't have enough people to hire is the answer.
Hundred percent. So I don't know if people have walked the fields recently, they are as good as they have been in years, and it's because we made a decision as a school board two years ago to add another fields position, because we saw what happened when we didn't have enough field staff. We, you know, we had some fields actually fail all the way, right? To repair a field is hugely expensive, so we made the decision to hire a whole nother position. This summer was the, we just actually heard it in the facilities committee, it's the first summer that we've been fully staffed since we made that investment, right? So, and I think you can tell the difference, right? If you go to Memorial School, it looks beautiful, you go to Dunn School, we've been able to get these painting projects we've been working on. So we feel really confident in our staff, we, you know, we hired a guy named Gary to do our field work in the last two years, he has done amazing work in getting ever more use out of these fields. But at some point, Gary can only do too much.
Well, that's why I'm asking, because if something happens to Gary, then we're kind of stuck holding our hand.
I mean, that's, that's everything.
So, but that's something we need to budget for. If we're spending all the money upfront to put the new fields, take care of the fields and do that, then we also need to budget and figure out what happens if Gary goes down. Who takes care of the fields, and the field's just, well, Gary's not here, so...
We budget it for the positions, if we can't fill the positions, I mean, that's life, but absolutely with...
But that's not a great answer for trying to ask for money to put fields in and say, well, what happens after that? That's life on the field.
I mean, it's what happens if we don't find a principal for the school, I mean, like...
Guys, Sam?
The assistant principal steps in, we have a plan for that, right? So that's my question, what is the plan if Gary goes down?
Gentlemen, if you could let me take the floor back.
I understand that, but I was speaking directly with Sam on this.
Excuse me, I'm in charge of this meeting, and it's supposed to be a question and answer, and I found my...
It was a direct question for Sam.
So the fact of the matter is, we have...
I understand, but I respectfully would like Sam's opinion on that, I spoke directly to Sam, and now you're cutting me off of having a conversation with Sam on a question, that's very rude.
So it's not supposed to be a conversation?
But he was answering my question, and you cut him off.
He's answered your question three times.
It was a totally different question.
Proceed.
The question was, what happens if Gary goes down? What is our alternative plan? Sam asked me, what happens if the principal goes down at the school? Plain and simple, it's assistant principal takes over. So that was my question back to Sam when he jumped in.
And it's a very similar process in, in our field staff and our facility staff. Hopefully, we have people that we've trained well, and we elevate them up, and we hire from below. That's, you know, what every organization does.
So if we have an open position, we will try to fill it with a position. Craig, is there something you would like to say?
Well, I was gonna say, we have three hundred and twenty-five employees. We have French teachers, English teachers, bus drivers, cafeteria cooks, administrators, and sometimes they retire, sometimes they take a job someplace else, and we recruit, hire the best person we can find. So that's what we would do if the current groundskeeper were to leave.
Well, I understand that, but I mean, if that was the case, we have full staffing and students, school bus drivers and things like that.
In terms of virtually any employee that leaves, we advertise and look for the best person we can find, and then we hire them. In terms of expansion of fields, if we do have more fields to cover, and it would require not just one groundskeeper, but one point five, then indeed, we would have to take that into consideration and budget for it.
But has that been taken into consideration already? That was my question in the beginning.
Yeah, it's taken into consideration that if you add more space, or if you expand something bigger, if we were to add on a wing to the school, then we know we would have to hire the appropriate custodial staff to maintain whatever that...
And that's what my question was from the beginning, thank you.
Question two. So I printed out a form from activists, activity test, are you guys? Okay, so it's a summary opinion of probable costs, and it was from a couple of years ago, actually, and it says that the synthetic turf athletic field is two million, over two million, is that correct?
I think, yeah, I don't exactly know how many years ago that was, so some of those costs may have changed a little bit since then.
And I've also heard that the NFLPA says that ninety-two percent of players want to play on grass, and that injuries occur less frequently on natural grass, so...
That's a good question about turf, I don't know if we want to save that for question three.
No, we should save that for question four.
Sure, there'll be a question more, how about that?
Okay, I'll wait until question three, bye.
Just a few separate questions here. So I guess number one, with your redesign for the fields, there is no new space being created? Is that all within existing space that is out there today?
No, the, the new baseball multipurpose field, is it in the untouched parcel that's out behind the school? It's currently wooded.
This up here doesn't exist.
Okay. And then, so the other piece that I have is, if number two doesn't pass, what is the plan for youth or other teams that do utilize the space? What's that plan look like going forward? Do we maintain status quo, and we continue to use existing fields, or what, what happens there?
So we don't know what happens next, if the bond fails, we know that the need remains, and we just have to go back and take a fresh look at how do we meet those needs and what is our next step? So that would not be something we would know tonight. I would assume what we're doing right now is what we keep doing until we have a better option or a better plan.
So there, there wouldn't, so next spring, summer, nothing would come out and say at the last minute, youth football wouldn't be able to utilize a football field in order for our youth three, four, and five, six grades to have football next fall?
I would not know that. I would not anticipate anything wildly different than what we're doing right now, but we've not talked about if X, Y, Z, what would our, what policies would we change next year? That is just not a conversation that's happening.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, I'm Derek Goff, I live in Gray, and I have some notes here, but just want to thank you board members for being as transparent as possible, and having, we've had several meetings here, this is the only one I've been able to make it, but I know you've had several meetings discussing this, and making sure that everyone is well informed, so no matter which way anyone votes, can't say we weren't given the opportunity to be informed, so thank you for that. During the tour today, I asked the kids that were giving the tour of the auditorium, they do festivals, competitions, and band concerts over there, I said, hey, where, where do you guys go for that? And they said, well, we go to other communities, it bounces around. And then they said, we're not allowed to have one here, because our facilities are so poor. So that means families are going to these other communities. Families from all of them, not only Green and La Brosse, but from Cumberland, Falmouth, wherever, as it bounces around. They're spending money in their communities, they're getting gas, they're getting... They're spending money in their communities. They're getting gas, they're getting dinner, they're getting lunch. They're bringing families together in, economically stimulating another economy, not, not getting any lost stars. Uh, so I think that's an important piece that a lot of people, when I look on Facebook, they're all talking about it like, yeah, it's gonna cost me this, it's gonna cost me this, milk costs this. Well, it's gonna, it's going to stimulate the economy. Um, my daughter, she dances at a studio in Gray, and kind of the same deal, like, they can't have their recitals in Gray or in Gloucester. They go to Westbrook. So, again, there's three recitals, countless competitions, countless families, countless schools, all funneling into Westbrook and eating at Rock Row. They get Rock Row. Um, they're not eating at Dustin Dix, they're not eating at Birchwood. Uh, they're not getting gas at political gas station here. They're going somewhere else. And that's family from, I've got family from the mid-coast that come down to that, and they're not spending money in Gray. They're not increasing the, or helping get home there. Um, I'd say the same thing about basketball. Uh, I've coached at a neighboring, uh, high school for the past five years. And, uh, they have, they host a number of events in their gym, including in the summertime, they will host AAU tournaments, basketball tournaments, and that largely funds the basketball program. And the same thing, I don't mean to be, keep repeating myself, but like, our gym's sitting empty. They're funneling money into their community from other people outside of their community, and they're stimulating their economy while our gym over there sits empty. Um, the varsity coach here, uh, he, we, we were talking once, and he said, hey, why don't, why don't we do that at, at, at G and G? And number one, the gym isn't safe. Like, it's, it's not, I think the MPA regulations says it's not, not to code or whatever. I don't know what the term is. Um, but it's not safe. No, no one's gonna wanna play here, and, and the seating is, is terrible. So, sidelines, uh, we were talking to a couple of basketball players that had, uh, had toured, gave us the tour. And again, I coached at a, a rival school, but I've been here numerous times as a rival, uh, coach. Um, but the sidelines, in the winter, when that gym is packed, people are walking on the court. It's unsafe for kids. They're walking on the court after their feet are full of dirt and salt, and the athletic director's sweeping every time out, every dead ball, doing the best they can. But guess what? People slip, people get injured. I don't mind, just hated playing in this gym, and it wasn't because of the gravity, it was because of the facilities. Um, same goes for, uh, the benches, uh, where you sit here. And I asked those, the kids that give the tour, I said, are there any schools that you know of where you sit on a bleacher with, but as a team, and the audience is right behind you? They couldn't give an example. Um, I grew up in the mid-coast, similar sized school. I went to Madonick Valley, uh, similarly built, built sixty-nine, if I remember correctly. Uh, and I've been around to countless gyms here and even intercity gyms. That gym is the worst high school basketball gym I had ever stepped foot in. Worst equipped basketball gym I've ever stepped foot in, and that's no exaggeration. Um, I know, I'm probably out of time there.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Can I just say one more thing?
Could you?
Okay. Um, and I don't wanna go into all like the countless benefits of athletics, arts, social benefits, future health, education, economic success, like, everyone knows that. That's, it's great for the community, it's great for our kids. Um, I'm certainly a benefit of, uh, athletics and arts as, as a kid myself. Um, but also, people have to think about the community itself, like, not even just our kids, but it, it raises the whole community up. It raises our property values. Everyone's all upset. Our property value has just doubled. So, now we get paid a little more taxes, but my taxes went down. I don't know. I was...
I'm gonna answer the question.
Okay.
Thank you.
Just saying, investment.
You can come back for question three if you want. All right, anyone else on question two?
Um, so I was curious, it was mentioned it hasn't gone out to bid yet. When it does, how long is it out to bid?
Yeah, I mean, I'd, I'd be looking at probably approaching two months for, for a bid period, for a project of this scale.
And, um, does anyone ever reach out to specific companies to say, hey, we have this out here? Would you be interested in putting in a bid?
Yeah, most definitely. Uh, whenever I put out projects of this scale, uh, obviously, the projects will advertise, um, in multiple papers over multiple, um, weekends, uh, so there will be a, a general advertisement. Um, and then we, just because of the project and scale, I'm gonna be reaching out to every contractor in the state that I know that does schoolwork.
Okay, is it also posted on social media?
Um, yeah, I mean, I'm sure the school will pick up the, the bid advertisement on the school's website. And then also, um, like, um, construction summary, they, they pick up those pieces. So, that's, all the general contractors in the state will be aware of the project.
Okay. Um, and question on the cafeteria. I don't recall, is, are some of the lunches in the main one, and then some of them in aux, or no, it's all held?
So, lunches are held here. Sadie, if I say something wrong, jump in. Um, I know that lunches are near, weather permitting, kids are allowed to eat out in the courtyard. Um, but generally, I mean, this is where food service happens, and this is where kids are eating.
And it's split across three times?
Yep, so there's two, two main lunches, um, and we also have breakfast. Um, essentially, time-wise, this kitchen is open from about seven o'clock in the morning till about one o'clock in the afternoon. Is that right, Sadie? It's so, that's all but essentially an hour of, of the school day. They are serving food.
Okay. Um, so with the new cafeteria that they're looking at on the bond, would it still be spread across the three times, or would it be condensed to one?
No, the ta, the lunches would remain how they are, which is to accommodate the academic schedule. So, we would never try, it would be very expensive, timely, and it wouldn't work with class, it would work against classes to try to feed everyone at once.
Okay. So, currently, um, I've heard from my personal children and other people across social media that the problem that the students are having right now is that they don't have enough time to eat. And if they happen to come towards the end of their allotted lunch period, there's no food. They don't have any choices. There's nothing left. So, they either grab something at the store, or wait until they get home, or they bring a snack with them in case that happens. So, if we're not changing the times, and they're gonna have the same time and the same slots, but a bigger cafeteria, how does that help feed the kids more effectively?
So, actually, the plan is the cafeteria, the, the seating area is no bigger. The service area actually gets quite a bit bigger and allows, so right now, the structure of it is a very one at a time. I hear about it from my own kid here as well, like, the things you're saying are exactly what we're hearing. It sneaks out through the hallway, people caught in line, it's hopeless, you know, they give up. Um, and so then it forces this very one at a time thing. The, um, what we would do is open up on the other side of the wall that we can't see. The kids come in here now and like have to weave in, is it will be a wide open space, kind of like a mall, at the mall where like there's a gate, you know, that you can open or shut it during service time. But it will be wide open, and this service area gets quite a bit bigger, so kids can spill in, and there'll be room for more, um, service stations so that we can put out more food. There's things kids wanna see, salad bar, they wanna see sandwich bar. They wanna see things that we just don't have the capacity for. And so, the very much the idea is we get the kids through much faster and give them more choice, um, give them great healthy options, and then they eat in the space that, you know, this space for eating is not really the problem. It's the getting kids to, through the food service.
So, with the bigger cafeteria, would you just make it faster to serve the kids?
And be able to add some more, um, fixtures for different types of offerings, yes.
Okay, so the offerings could expand, but what about the food itself?
I'm not sure I understand.
So, there are kids that don't get to eat, because when they finally get to choose lunch, there's a lot of things that they just don't have anymore.
Right. So, that is not necessarily addressed by this project? Other than, you know, again, the getting kids in, the being able to put more food out at one time? Um, Sadie, can you speak any further to the realities of the food service?
Yeah, there are a variety of options, so they may be adding options, but there's typically a lot left at the end. Um, so, like Penny said, having, you know, increasing the size, and there would allow many more options for kids to have. Um, if there's a specific concern, that's due to, please have a share of the meat. Um, and I have heard some that are trying to repeat that, for example, maybe Silbo. Um, but they do have a variety of options for kids, probably higher than a lot.
And we have some...
Yeah, just, just one item to kind of add to that, and I don't think, it, it ties, it ties into it a little bit. But keep in mind, so, the idea with a new, um, serving would be kind of a scatter approach, right? So, right now, you have coming into ours and weave in a single file line and then back out. Um, so, so the new serving area at least could take all the way to the doors there, and it's a scatter approach. So, when you come in off the corridor, um, you have an opportunity, not just to wait in line, but you go to an area, get what you want, and then right back out. A lot of times, what happens in these single queue lines is kids are coming through, and they're seeing the first thing that comes that's in the line, so they're like, okay, I'm gonna take that, and then continue through the line. As a scatter approach, that kind of goes away a little bit, right? So, they have the opportunity to go to get exactly what they want, rather than just kind of seeing something in line and say, okay, maybe I should just get this for today. Uh, the scatter approach gives you a lot more opportunities, and hopefully, the kids can take advantage of that. So, they're not, um, kind of just drawn to one item, give them more opportunities to see more of a variety of different things in the serving area, um, and hopefully, a lot of help with that a little bit as well.
So, with this scatter approach, as you're calling it, um, is there any concern that that would create chaos?
No, I, I don't think so, just because, like, like, already mentioned, we're not increasing the, the, the student load in the, um, in the area. We're just giving them more space, uh, to kind of work their way through. And we're also, the way that, um, I can walk you through the drawing layout that we have up there too. But we're actually giving quite a bit of circulation space as they go through there. That was something we thought about quite a bit when we were talking with the food service director, to make sure we had enough space for circulation to happen through there, um, as, as students are moving through the space.
Okay, thank you.
Question two. All right, moving on to question three, uh, the turf question. So, question three reads, if question two is approved, do you favor the installation of an artificial turf surface at the competition performance field at the Green Gloucester High School, the turf project, and authorizing the school board of main school administrative district number fifteen, the district, to issue additional bonds or notes in an amount not to exceed seven hundred and two thousand, seven hundred and thirty-five dollars to finance the turf project?
This one's a little more simple. Uh, the addition this would just have in the field design I've shown you already, making the main performance field a competition artificial turf, allow the students to be on the field as early as March, reduces costs for use over traditional grass, because we get more uses out of it, avoids cancellation of use for rain or weather when the fields get too wet. We have to not allow them to be used in open damage. Would allow us to host neutral site games and tournaments as discussed, and is aligned with most peer teams, uh, facilities around the state.
So, our final public hearing, question three, open to questions of others.
So, I was looking at the breakdown of summary opinion on probable costs, and I don't see that there's a maintenance in that list.
Right, so this, that, that probable cost would not be for the maintenance, this is for the actual construction of the, of the field.
Okay, so where would those, like, things like...
I believe in one of our previous presentations, there was a breakdown that compared natural grass maintenance costs to synthetic turf.
Okay.
Um, so we can direct you to that. It might even be on the, uh, the website.
So, those additional costs are included somewhere in some budget?
I, I'm looking for it now, just to point you to it, but we did a, like, analysis of both the usage, the wear, and then what goes into maintaining one type of field over another. Um, so, the website is really drinking from a fire hose, so it sometimes takes a while to find things, but...
It's small, but the charts are side by side on the question three page of the website. Uh, it just goes through and, you know, the, um, the, it's obviously less expensive to maintain the turf for a while. And then, we acknowledge that at some point, the turf, uh, needs to be replaced. So, it might be ten years, it might be fifteen years, it might be twelve years. Um, and so, if you look at the cost, it ends up being about a wash, right? So, you save a bunch of money for a while, but then you have to replace it. And then, if we decide to replace it with turf again, we would have to spend that money for the turf again. And then you save on maintenance for ten years, but in general, you know, it's not a huge cost saver.
Sam, where on the website does it show that?
It's right on the, on the, on the artificial turf Q three page, just right at the bottom there.
Or in the middle, even better.
Oh, okay, I see. It says in the middle. Yeah, so it looks like two charts side by side. You'll find it under the picture, actually.
Yeah, it goes down into like, you know, dollars per use hour and...
Yeah, it's a robust, it's a really robust study as to what would go into a natural grass field maintenance levels. Everything from core aeration, top dressing, overseeding, you know, anticipating re-sodding certain areas during the year, irrigation costs, um, and just a direct comparison of what those costs would look like with a turf field, the reduction of man hours, potentially having to paint a different field once in a while, a grooming every couple of weeks, um, in-house, and maybe contracted maintenance as well on that, and then just a side by side comparison of that.
So, your company is the company that's gonna do this?
No, so Activitas is a landscape architecture and civil engineering firm. Uh, we just so happen to specialize in athletic facility design. Um, we specialize in everything from municipal private work from elementary school up to professional work. Um, and, uh, we've been working with Green Gloucester since about twenty twenty, um, kind of the master plan for the fields.
Okay, so when the bids come in, isn't it district policy that the bids are opened in public?
Yeah, there's, uh, in the, um...
Bidding and purchasing requirements policy?
Right, in the RFP that says it will be opened at this day and time in this place. And anybody who wants to be at the district office when we open up the bid is welcome to be there.
So, why did that not happen with HVAC?
With the HVAC, we did do that, yeah. No, we did do that.
Oh, there was a public opening?
No, it's announced. It's always announced, and people can attend.
So, where do we, where for the fields do we look for that announcement?
That'll always be on the district calendar. Um, all of our meetings are always published on our district calendar. We do our best to circulate that via email and all of our ways of doing it.
And I'll, I'll just add that that would be a part of the building project as well. That's one, one bid advertisement for the entire project of question two.
Okay. Do schools allow last looks? Like, you know, if there's bids and a certain company wants to get a job, and other companies bid, is a particular company given the last look, you know? No, that's not allowed.
There's a very specific process for, because of our main public school that would legally follow for all of bids and stuff, and session how they're handled. So, we follow that to the T.
And so, even though they're on their line, this is for a different question. Thank you.
Question three.
My question for the turf is, I believe, don't quote me, but I believe as of twenty twenty-nine, um, artificial turf is being outlawed because of the PFAS that are being leaked into the drinking water.
So, that's some misinformation out there. PFAS, fields that have intentionally added PFAS to their systems will be banned by twenty twenty-nine. I think that's getting stretched to twenty thirty-two. I think that's still in the legislature. Um, what I can definitively tell you is that no fields that we've put in and seen put in in the last three years from synthetic turf manufacturers have any PFAS intentionally added to the system itself. So, starting about three, four years ago, we started actually including in our specifications. We're really, really, uh, robust set of specifications that require testing of that system before it's even brought to the site. We would do the same exact thing here. Um, we wanna see samples taken from the, from the actual manufacturing plant of the, the carpet, the infill, the backing, uh, sent to an independent lab and see what those PFAS levels are. If there's any PFAS, we don't want that.
If there's any PFAS, we don't want them. We don't wanna see any detectable PFAS in there. And synthetic turf companies are saying we can do it and they're proving to us that they can. The tough thing with PFAS is you need to do that in a closed, before, closed is kind of really controlled process before it gets to the field, right? PFAS are everywhere. They could be, they're in a lot of the clothing you have, they're in the seats, they're, they're literally all around us right now. So just to give ourselves that clean bill to say, hey, we do have a clean product that's coming out, we know what's going in the ground, that's when we wanna do the testing before it even gets to the site.
Now, whatever company you decide to go with, is that testing public information that you post? And where is that posted?
That could absolutely be something that we, that we post. And I know, you know, I believe Kenny just put a new track up field and they posted all of their testing right up there for the public to see. And you can do that kind of the whole way through. We're doing that for the town of Lexington, Mass. right now. Everything's getting posted. So very transparent, show exactly what the community has, what's going in.
Thank you. I lie back and.
That's all right.
So this is more from board and just because, general question. Why the turf field? Was there a outcry from the town that said, we want a turf field at the school? Or was this part of the main saying, hey, get me for you if you apply for it?
So part of, so our process was to do a need assessment throughout the schools. We talked to students, we talked to teachers, we talked to coaches, we talked to professionals. We brought in the landscape architects. So the idea was to look at what do our kids need, what are they asking for, what is, what's happening? How do we purchase, how do we get them outside? How do we participate in these, in these neutral site games, et cetera? So the sort of standard for, at this time, is to have a turf, a turf performance field and that was a recommendation. However, we know that it's a very hotly debated piece that people feel very strongly about and we wanted to let the community weigh in and not say, well, I actually can't support this big package because I feel strongly about turf. So that was the decision. We, as a board, supported putting it on the ballot because of all the benefits of artificial turf, but understand that folks may feel strongly about it and we don't wanna, we don't wanna make a break in project about it.
Okay, you said something a moment ago that I'm familiar with, that neutral.
Yeah, so.
What is that?
Yep, so a neutral site game is a tournament, a championship game, a playoff game. So say Greeley and Holland Regional School were doing playoff game. They can't have that game at either of their home bases, so they have to find a, what's called a neutral site. So you would get to host, so that's what a different gentleman was talking about when you, when you host these, have this opportunity to host. Our boosters are running the Snapchat, you know, we're doing all the things, but it's other teams playing here.
And just because I'm kind of unfamiliar with that one, is that commonplace? Have we, have we got a number, like, this happens X number of times a year?
Uh, I don't really remember off the top of my head, but you could look at, you know, the Main Principles Association of our athletic director or, oh, you might.
Yeah, it's relatively commonplace. The Main Principles Association will routinely schedule playoff matches at neutral host sites.
Okay.
And those are pre-selected based on the requirements of seating and, and the surface.
And other than other teams using that field and money for the boosters or whatnot, does there any other funding comes in for two other teams using a neutral site? Do they pay you?
That's a good question with, like, with the Main Principles Association contest. Aside from that, the school district could certainly establish some level of rental fees for any other, any other outside groups using it. I'm not terribly sure.
That would be something I could get an answer to and put on our FAQ page because I think it would be worth knowing, what is the benefit? Or is there a financial benefit with the hosting of the Main Principles Association of it? Similar with the stage, the things like the One Act Festival, there has to be a host school. A lot of schools come to it and the school who's hosting does compete at that. So some of the, some of these sort of tournament-style things, your home school is also competing at.
Okay. All right, because just my personal opinion, I'm not a fan of it. It feels like, again, this is my own opinion, that we're trying to keep up with the Joneses. A lot of other towns, at bigger budgets, are able to either put them in or plan on putting them in because it's a list of additional benefits, which again, I think, depending on the amount of use, I don't think the benefits are really there. Increased injuries to the athletes. As you said earlier, there's a lot higher injury rates, especially when it comes to contact sports on a turf field. Turf field is just as slippery, in my opinion, as grass when it's wet and played on both. I used to live in Cumberland, I grew up in Cumberland. I can't afford to live there anymore. I don't wanna live there anymore. So I hope this isn't a, hey, we're keeping up to the Joneses because these other ones are doing it. I'm not saying that is, but that's just, that's the feel in Mike's opinion.
Yeah, that, please, that one's a little bit.
Yep, please.
Sam?
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I just wanna speak to the use piece, right? So I don't want people to discount the extra use that is available. So right now, if you go into our gym, one of the things you'll see is there are a couple of holes in the bleachers because every spring, our baseball team has to practice in that gym for like a month and a half before the fields are ready because otherwise they'll destroy it, right? They would be outside, right? The lacrosse team in the spring practices in our parking lot for three weeks before the fields are ready. So there is, you know, we as a school board have tried to get our kids on our campuses as much as possible, right? We think good things happen when kids are on our campuses. But if we're gonna ask those to be on our campus and practice in the parking lot or, you know, where, in the gym where it's not fit for purpose, you know, this allows them to get outside, you know, in a fundamentally different way. We can basically play on it 365, you know, as long as we can get the snow off there.
And I'm assuming there's a cost estimate to going to other towns who have turf and using theirs or going to some of these indoor facilities that are on some of the.
And we do that a lot.
Where, hey, we can rent this for a year for this cost and over that cost of time, it's still either more or less than a turf field, which, you said 10-year lifespan for us to be.
Minimum 10, so you're saying turf, like, an eight-year warranty?
Sure.
We're seeing fields right now lasting 12 to 15. So be conservative with our estimating, let's assume a year 10, we have to replace it.
Yeah, it's okay, understood. You can do a assessment or whatever, it's just personally my son's favorite. If we take care of the grass fields, it's like you buy a car versus leasing a car. Lease a car, you're gonna turn it in and pay for it again if you wanna buy it. Buy a car, take care of it, lasts for a long, long time. That's it, thank you folks for all your information.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else on question three? All right. Well, I have lost control of the computer, so I can't go to the last slide, which just says, thank you for coming. I do appreciate it. I know some folks, this is your first meeting. I know some folks, I have seen you again, again at these and I really appreciate it. It is, it's a lot of investment of your time and energy to be here and to engage with us on this. You can find the website, like I talked about, at MSAD15. There's a big red button that takes you to the bond site, there is some information out front. We have all of these drawings out in the lobby, if you haven't got to look at them, if you wanna look at them on close. And again, I invite people to email, reach out if you wanna have a conversation or have more questions, then we will get back to you with the answer. So thanks for coming.